City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting. Today is April 3rd, it is now 8:00 PM. We will start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Will Clerk please call the roll?
Adam, President, Brown.
Here.
Clark. Here.
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 Alright, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Clark.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Clark.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Alright, motion passes. That concludes roll call. Uh, moving on to item number two, which is the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Are there any changes or adjustments to be made? Alright, hearing none. Gonna move on to item number three, which is presentations, and we have none. Uh, Don, on that, we'll have to start, um, the business of the month back up, because there are a lot of businesses that are doing really good work in Forest Park, and we do want them to be acknowledged, and it's been a couple months.
Yeah, we moved it to the last month, to the last meeting, to the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. Alright, and that concludes item number three, which is presentations. So we're gonna move on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council, or ask questions of concern to them. So when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped, recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So if anyone would like to address council?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Smith.
Easter Bunny, I think. I was here about you too, whatever. And I had a question about, of course, the center. Would you, uh, take a review, and I have a question also? Do we have EB transportation in Forest Park by the city? Electrical vehicle?
Transportation for the families to the public.
Like if we wanted to go over to Starbucks, if we wanted to go to Pizza Hut, do you all come out?
That's available to the public, or only to city employees?
No, no.
Yeah, uh, nothing available to the public, but we do have electric vehicles, uh, that are available for city use.
How many vehicles do you have?
Uh, how many?
Did you give another copy, citizen?
Okay, I'm gonna ask a question about that. I, I, I need some additional information, I'm told. And, uh, I, I contact certain departments, and some I don't get responses. One, I get two or three months later, and I understand that I shouldn't have to wait that long. So I'd like for you to take a review of that project that the city held some years ago, and I understand I need some additional information, like contracts, money spent, who spent it, who did what with whom, and how many other contracts are involved? Has any, uh, revolution been, uh, in any way changed or updated in reference to that project? And I don't have access to that information. But I don't wanna contact the wrong department again. If I should contact Cincinnati, then I'll contact Cincinnati. But I don't wanna just write to one of the departments here, and I don't get a response. I understand it's supposed to be within three weeks. One department I contacted, I didn't get for a while. So I'm gonna circumvent that. But I'd like to get some additional information. I just wanna know the proper, uh, department to contact here. If you don't, if I shouldn't contact anyone here, contact the city lawyer or whomever. I don't wanna contact you, because they intimidate me when they see me on the streets and, you know, say certain things like, "Bull." So I don't want that to happen again. So I circumvent that. That may be a little hyperbole, but anyway, I'd truly like to know who to contact.
If you contact me with a question, I will give you an answer.
Yeah, uh, I need information, yeah. Like the information I gave you, I thought maybe you might have found some information out about it.
You mean on the Senior Center?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. But I did that just between walking up and giving you, I didn't find you.
Yeah, I don't know what you wanted me to do with it.
That's what, I wanna know what it is. I wanna know what that information was. I wanna know who disseminated, who, who had to respond to, when was it done, how was it done? How does it affect the Senior Center? But other than that, I don't need anything else.
Okay, that was a letter from the former city manager, an email.
Yeah.
That's all it was.
Right, they wanna, well, who?
You want more information on that subject?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I thought you were just giving me information.
Well, you, I'm getting information from the city manager.
Mr. Smith, what other departments have you contacted about this?
Please?
What other departments have you contacted?
I've contacted Recreation, I've contacted, uh, what is it, Development, and, uh, those two. And just the information I've given out to a couple of council. I just thought maybe I'd get some report from them. But I'm not holding anyone here accountable for what I physically walked up and gave someone. I'm talking about what I submitted and wrote, and requested information.
So in regards to, uh, this, was it called Silver Sneakers?
Yeah.
Senior Sneakers or Silver?
Silver Sneakers.
In the question that you, uh, the information that you, you passed on to me, and I spoke with, uh, staff with the, with the Rec Center, and to my understanding, and what the information that was said, that in regards to the, the fee, was it, what, three dollars, a fee?
Yeah.
That, that the, uh, the request for the fee was involved with the Medicare program, and that, the person that's in charge of that, of that program, uh, if the person is not paying, that money is, is reimbursed to that instructor through that benefit from the Medicare, uh, program. It's, it's a benefit that's associated with the Medicare system. And if the person's Medicare, uh, program that they're part of does not include that, uh, that part of the benefit, then that's where the three dollars service fee come in. Because those people, those individuals that do not pay the three dollars, the three dollars come, uh, from the Medicare benefit part of that, that program. That, that was what I, uh, was told in the clarity that I got out of questioning why.
So it's something, it's a fee separate from the membership fee?
Yes.
To the facility, to the Forest Park Senior Facilities? When I have membership for anything that goes on in the facility, someone else comes from outside who has membership in the facility, who does not live in Forest Park, but has the proper insurance coverage, gets it free? Is that what you're saying?
As far as the, the three dollars and the fee that's associated with the individual that's instructed, that's how that person obtains their income, or their revenue, to be able to support and to manage that program. So it's a part of their, their pay fee.
So you're paying them twice, are you paying them by the city? And you're paying by this additional fee? In other words, there has to be some conflict there. I have paid a membership for that facility, facility and that program. Because I have Allstate and W-Wee Insurance covers Silver Sneakers. Why should I have to pay an additional fee to go to a facility I've already paid full membership to? That's what I'm asking. Also, if I understand it right, if there's any money collected for any fees in that facility, there's supposed to be some other process with that, I understand. I don't know exactly, that's the reason I said I need additional information. Because I don't, I don't understand, I really truly don't understand. If I pay a fee for this club, and you can let someone come from Fairfield or wherever, because they have, like I said, Allstate, and I have Fifi Insurance, and Fifi Insurance doesn't cover, uh, Silver Sneakers, they get it free? Because they have the right instruments, which has no affiliation, no correlation, nothing to do with the city of Forest Park? The Forest Park Center was built for the seniors, as Forest Park.
Well, let me ask you a question, let me ask a question. Um, it's my understanding that if you have insurance that Silver Sneaker, that, uh, covers Silver Sneakers, then they are paying for it. It's not like somebody's coming in from another area, and they have Silver Sneakers and you don't. It's still being paid, maybe it's not being paid out of their pocket, like you're paying out of your pocket, but Silver Sneakers is covered by your insurance. The insurance is just like you go to the doctor, you have a copay, ten dollars, you're, I mean, you have to pay insurance. Your insurance covers your charges, and that's what's, my understanding of Silver Sneakers, is that Silver Sneakers, your insurance will pay that, will pay the center. It doesn't necessarily come out, those people are paying the premiums for the insurance. They have Silver Sneakers as part of their insurance. Silver Sneaker pays their five dollars, and you don't have Silver Sneakers, you pay your five dollars. That's my understanding of how, how, uh, Silver Sneakers work.
Okay, well, Mr.?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Smith, we'll have, uh, the city manager look into this, uh, the details of this project in particular, and then he'll get back to you, okay?
No, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, are there any other communications from the public? After such a spirited debate?
Well, what was that, I forgot?
Oh, I'm glad you got to, the progress, good. Alright, so that concludes item number four, and the agenda, communications from the public. So we're gonna move on to item number five, which is reports from standing committees. And we're gonna start with Councilmember Adams.
Yes, sir, I do have a report. Um, it's a little lengthy, not lengthy, but I'd like to be able to read it if that's possible. Thank you so much. So as you know, I'm the chairperson for the Beautification Commission, and I wanted to read this. Forest Park is bringing forward and beautifying the city. As Forest Park is recognized as one of Ohio's oldest tree cities, the Tree City Luncheon this year is sponsored by the city of Fairfield on April the 20th. Tree City USA Awards will be presented at the luncheon. Arbor Day is scheduled for April the 28th at 10:00 AM. Refreshments will follow the tree planting ceremony in the city building. The public is invited. Reforestation Forest Park is a major project. Studies have shown that if you can only plant one tree planted in a city. In an era of overwhelming need for urban infrastructure improvements, trees offer cities many benefits. Trees remove carbon dioxide, filter air pollution, and produce oxygen. They absorb rainwater, UV radiation, and noise. They also slow down traffic, improve property values, and reduce human stress and mental fatigue. And they provide shade, which means we have to use less energy to cool down. Yes, it appears that money does grow on trees. It's not much longer, thank you for bearing with me. Among Forest Park's goals to replenish Forest Park's urban forest is to assist residents in purchasing 100 trees annually, and to provide an 80% subsidy on selected trees this year. Example, a sugar maple tree's cost of $69 will only cost the resident $10.35. Households have the opportunity to select, to select and plant two trees. Tree orders begin this month in April. Flower bed planting is scheduled the week of May 8th. Volunteers, I repeat, volunteers who wish to plant beds should notify the city office. The Beautification Yard Contest is scheduled for June the 24th and 25th. Volunteer judges are welcome. I repeat, volunteer judges are welcome, and needed, and needed. Contact the city office if you are interested. That is the beautification report. Thank you so much for allowing me to read it and your attention.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Adams. Does anybody else have any questions for Councilmember Adams about that report we just heard? Actually, I do have a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
So you said Arbor Day was when exactly?
Mayor, I've read it. I'm sorry.
The 28th.
Thank you so much.
Okay, 28th.
Yes, sir. It's at 10:00 AM.
So we always, we usually, well, traditionally, we plant a tree on Arbor Day, um, right out here in Central Park, so we'll be doing that again this year.
Yes, sir. It's gonna be in Central Park, I believe. I haven't heard anything different. If I do, I'll be sure to make a communication available to the council.
Yeah, we, we take our, uh, status as a tree city quite seriously.
Absolutely.
We actually love trees, obviously with our name. Um, but yeah, we do plant a tree in the park every year, so residents are always welcome to come, um, and attend that ceremony. And then you said the beautification, um, the yard contest?
Yes, sir, that's going to be June 24th and 25th. And volunteer judges are welcome.
Okay, so how many volunteers are, are we taking?
I, I think at this point, as many as we can get, sir.
As many as we can get, okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm just, I'm trying to get all the details out there, because people, they, they take this contest in particular quite seriously.
Yes, they do.
It's one of our most popular contests, so how do people?
We have such a beautiful city. And the communication says that we need to contact the city office.
Okay, well, how, how do people get their house on the list to be?
Contact the city office and let our clerk know that they're interested in participating in the, in the contest, and then our president for the Beautification Committee will get those communications, and/or I will provide her with those communications from our clerk, and that we'll be able to let them know.
And what office is that?
The clerk, the clerk office, our clerk.
So people, I'm, we have to get the details out there, because they will, people will be calling, and they'll be sending us emails, so more information we get out now, and they're watching this, the less?
They need to contact the clerk of council.
Okay.
And she will get that information, and then she will either give it to me, um, as the chairperson for the Beautification Committee, or we will make provision for the president of the Beautification Committee to be able to get those things, get those names.
Thank you for that.
Clarification, you don't have to register. It's good that you do that, whether they make sure they go by your house. But they're going to be going down every street in the city, and, uh, and looking at homes, and if there's one that they see that didn't register, didn't call, uh, you can still, or still get a reward.
Thank you, thank you, city manager, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure everybody's house has an opportunity to be reviewed, because people send me a lot of messages before. I, I am not out there being a judge, but if you would like for me to judge, I could do that at the same time, though. It's a tough job, it is, it is a tough job. It's hard, it's, might be harder than being mayor. It is a, it is a difficult job.
But we do, I like to put emphasis that we do need volunteers.
Yes, yes, we do, I, I jest, of course.
And we have spaces open on our commission also for beautification, if anybody's interested in participating.
How many spaces are available?
I think we have six spaces available, if I'm not mistaken.
Six?
I think it's six.
Six spaces.
No, ma'am, I think what it is, is that we're wanting to add more people, and then some of our members have matured, and they're really wanting to, um, have some new, uh, I don't know how to say it. They wanna have some new energy, and some new people be a part of the committee, because they've, they've gotten, they've matured, and they, they wanna kinda sit back a little bit, still be a part of, but kinda sit back a little bit.
Okay, yeah, people can actually, um, come up to the municipal building to get applications to join our commissions, and they're right in the lobby, soon as you, soon as you walk in, um, if you would like to join that.
And I use the phrase mature, very lovingly.
Absolutely. We love our mature residents. Uh, so that concludes Councilmember Adams' report. I don't have any items in the work session for you. Do you have any, uh, to add, Councilmember?
For work session, I'd like us to explore, um, stiffer penalties for littering.
Okay. Alright, moving on, we're gonna go to the next Councilmember. Councilmember Harris, huh?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the residents of Forest Park. Um, last month, the month of March, was Women's History Month, so this month in April, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that the Days of Remembrance and Holocaust Remembrance Day will be observed between, uh, April 16th and April 23rd. And for those who do not know what Holocaust Remembrance Day is, the United States Congress established Days of Remembrance as the nation's annual commemoration of the Holocaust. Public law 96-388 established the United States Holocaust Memorial Council and authorized the actions of the council. Each year, the President of the United States also issues a presidential proclamation for the observance. Uh, the Days of Remembrance and Holocaust Remembrance Day vary each year according to the Hebrew calendar. So this year, it will be between April 20th, or April 16th and 23rd. So I'd like to recognize that fact. Um, as far as our standing committees, um, like Councilmember Adams says, we need people. So if anybody's interested in becoming a part of one of our, uh, various boards in this beautiful city, uh, please send an application to the city. Um, we will review it and get you on one of these boards. And that's all I have to, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember. I don't have any work session items for you, do you, would you like to add any?
Uh, no, sir, not at this time.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to first Vice Mayor Hope.
I do not have a report, thank you.
Alright, thank you for that. Do you have any work session items to add?
No, I do not, thanks.
Alright, and we'll be on to second Vice Mayor Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say the Quality of Life, uh, Committee Commissioners met, um, last month, and thank you, uh, Mayor Brown and Mr. Jones for coming to our meeting. Um, and Mr. Jones discussed, um, programs to improve property maintenance and enhancing city properties. And also, the Commissioners had an opportunity to see the progress newsletter, and so they were very excited about that, um, to see printed communication tools used to disseminate information into our community. And also, they had some other suggestions and ideas for future volumes. So we're very excited, and thank you for coming to our meeting.
Thank you.
That completes my report.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Moore. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Moore in the report? Alright, hearing none, I don't have any work session items for you. Dr. Moore, would you like to add any?
Um, no, thank you.
Alright, and moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, just to, uh, comment on, excuse me, this past weekend, um, at Friscus, I had the breakfast with the bunny. And I tell you, that bunny was the highlight of the, of the party. It, it was a good time. Uh, we had a nice showing, I, I wasn't able to actually stay for the full amount of time of the window that was blocked out, but, uh, but we did have decent participation. And, uh, that was a good combination of, of, uh, youth, young children, and seniors. So, uh, we, uh, thank the Parking Reg Commission for, uh, initiating and, and continuing on with the events that we've got scheduled for this coming summer. So, uh, just wanted to come on, comment on that, and, uh, and to let the residents know that there'll be more to come and with the events that the city have planned for this summer. So, uh, keep out and keep a watch out on the information that's communicated, and, uh, allow yourself opportunity to come and, and enjoy the city that you have, the events. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Does anyone have any questions for Councilmember Sylvester?
I do have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Um, uh, if I remember correctly, we at some point in time discussed that members, citizens of Forest Park could use the senior center for repass, and at no cost for if there was a fee. Can you enlighten me on that? Because I remember it, because I'm being, I'm being asked that question. But I thought there was something, I mean, there was not this astronomical fee to use the center for repass if they were members of the city.
I know that there's a, there's a separate form that's?
Yeah, we had a long discussion.
In regards to, uh, renting the Senior Center for a repass. I don't have any knowledge of that there was once a no fee, uh, in regards to that. I can definitely follow up and, and look at prior communications or, or prior structures associated with, uh, what was announced with fee, with fees as far as dealing with a repass versus renting the center for some other event. Was this something?
Don, do you know, because I need to get back with this family. Do you know anything about that that I can go back to them with? Because I know there was some kind of provisions made for families that live in Forest Park.
I'll find out tomorrow early and give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, but?
I mean, I know we had, I know we had a long discussion about it. Do you remember anything on it? Yeah, that was a long?
That would be good to know.
A long discussion, because the family, then it even had something to do if they use, oh, Jordan. Rob, do you remember?
There is language available. There is language. There is language regarding?
Right, right.
Thanks for that, Don, thanks for bringing that up. Alright, um, and I don't have any work session items for you either. Councilmember Sylvester, would you like to add any?
Uh, other than having to follow up with details on the structure with the fees that's involved with, uh, the rental of the Senior Center, especially on the subject of repass for residents.
Okay, fee structure for Senior Center, okay.
Mayor Brown, please forgive me for interrupting, but, um, are you, are we aware that there are, um, people walking around in the building right now? I thought the cleaning people were gone, and I wasn't 100% sure if you all were aware. There are some, uh, young ladies walking around in the building at this time, and they're unfamiliar to me, and I didn't know they were familiar to anyone else.
Uh, no, are they, I mean, are residents trying to?
Yes. One's a cleaning.
They're cleaning.
Oh, they're cleaning, I apologize. I'm close to the gentleman cleaning and hadn't met them yet, I apologize. Okay, thank you. Oh, I did not know, thank you.
Okay. Alright, uh, that concludes, uh, reports for standing committees. Uh, moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. Uh, so I just want to echo, uh, Councilmember Sylvester. I know we did have the breakfast with Easter Bunny, I didn't, I was not able to attend, but I did hear that it was very well attended. And, uh, our events like this are incredibly popular, so we do wanna thank Friscus for opening their doors to us. Uh, I'm sure they, they really appreciate the business that we bring. But, uh, I do want to commend the Recreation Department for keeping lively events like that available to our, our seniors and our, our younger residents. Moving on, um, Mr. Smith did bring in his copy of the progress, so I, I'm sure a lot of residents have received their, their copy of our newsletter, which they will be going out quarterly, correct? Uh, so residents can be excited and anticipate, um, a letter updating everyone on all the wonderful progress that we are making in Forest Park. Uh, so just keep, uh, a eye out for that. Um, and, uh, the last thing, a part of my report is to also echo, uh, the sentiments about joining commissions. Our Economic Development Commission is looking to fill two seats. Uh, a month ago, council did expand that commission from seven members to, is going to be, uh, well, from five members to seven, uh, correct? Yeah. So we are looking for residents who have experience in, um, economic development, residents who know about business, business owners. Please, please, please join our commissions. Everyone always asks, hey, what businesses are coming to Forest Park? Well, now is your time to give your input directly to this body, the city manager, city staff, about the, the type of businesses that you would like to see and patronize, and help bring them and attract them to our beautiful city. Uh, and that concludes my report. So moving on, we're gonna go to item number seven, which is the city manager's report, Don.
Yes, uh, yes, keep an eye out for those, uh, progress. They should be showing up in your mailbox, hopefully, everyone's mailbox, shortly. Uh, I didn't check mine, so I'm looking forward to go home and see. I hope you got it today. Uh, quick, want to update, uh, council and everyone else here that, uh, there were some questions. If you all remember the, the new library, is, um, we've been working with them over the last year or so to get a location here in the city of Forest Park. And, uh, we've, we've finally closed with them on the land, so they are now the owners of, uh, of the land that they're gonna put their library on. So that's a good, that's really good news.
Yes.
We've received their first copy of their, um, submissions for their, uh, for their plans for the library, so things are gonna be rolling really quick. The location of the new library would be at the, uh, at the 660, I believe, uh, Northland, I think that's the numbers, right there by the north, 650 Northland Tower. So it'll be right up in front, right next to the post office. If you're looking at it, it's on the right-hand side. And so that's good news. Uh, we finally got to the point where we finalized that. Uh, we finally got to the point where we, uh, finalized that. The, uh, a couple of other things real quick and the, uh, just a couple of announcements. The, uh, uh, you might notice in, in Central Park, well, first of all, the, the April first is the official opening of, uh, of our parks. So, uh, now you're allowed to get to them and everything, but we know everybody's been in there all along. It's been great and it's, uh, it's a good time to get it open. But really what I wanted to talk about is we are installing at Central Park what will be the largest ninja apparatus in the state of Ohio. I don't know what else to call it, it's a course. Uh, you can see it from what road, it's pretty impressive in terms of the size.
Like a fitness course.
And it's definitely a fitness course and, uh, it's the largest of its type in the state of Ohio. So, uh, we would thank, um, we were able to get, uh, this is, finally got it delivered and we're still installing it. There's a couple of pieces that we have to, uh, that we're actually missing. So we'll be installing it as soon as we go. But in any event, I want to thank, uh, our representative Jessica Miranda and our state senator sites for, uh, excuse me, that sites up. And our state senator for, uh, uh, getting the, um, blessing, state senator blessing, for, uh, helping us get a hundred thousand dollar grant to, uh, to purchase that equipment. And, um, and we also have another hundred, a hundred thousand plus this year. Uh, they'll be going in on a, um, a walking trail, uh, surrounding, uh, Central Park. So look for a lot of activity at Central Park and, uh, stop by and take a look at that new, uh, fitness course out there. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to report for this evening.
Sounds good. That's exciting. Uh, does anyone have any questions for our city manager? Don, can you give us a bit of, uh, just a refresher or some specs on, uh, the library, the size and?
Well, I, I believe, again, off the top of my head, I believe it's twenty-five thousand square feet. It's going to be the largest, um, library that they're building. Um, it's a next-generation library. Um, this will be the largest one except for the one downtown.
Yeah, so this will be the second largest, which is fitting because we are the second largest city in the county.
That's true. And, uh, they're going to begin construction there very shortly. Again, they've submitted the plans, uh, our building commissioner is reviewing them. And, uh, construction should start fairly, fairly quick.
And they ought to, are gonna remain in the same spot that they wanted from beginning, right?
There, yes, well, yes, um, yes, they're, it's right at the front, on the left, um, right on Northland Boulevard, yes. Right, that's, unless they decide to move, then that's fine with us too. But bottom line is we've, we've, uh, closed on the land. And as, until they decide they, um, you know, get everything in, uh, that's exactly where they're gonna be going. So we're looking forward to putting them there. There was some discussion and, uh,
Right.
They still, as far as I know, they're still there.
Okay.
And I talked to them last week. So that's, that's where they want to be, that's fine with us.
Yeah.
That's the land and, uh, it'll be a great location. It'll be a great opportunity because there are a lot of things in this library in terms of meeting space for the community as well as maker space. There's three D printers, there's all kinds of things for the seniors, um, to take up hobbies and do it, do, you know, basically, if you've got a business, you can do a lot of work there. So, uh, um, so anyway, it's, it's gonna be a great, it's gonna be a great addition and a great asset for the city, the Forest Park and our citizens, yes, it will.
I believe they said our meeting space is about three hundred?
Oh, yes.
Was the increase that originally planned, so, yeah.
Yes.
So that's a large space.
It is a very large space for three hundred.
There'd be a huge, yeah, there's gonna be a lot of meeting space there, one big, large one. And so we'll be able to use it as a community as well for
Yeah, all type of programming, actually, yeah.
You name it, we can use it. And, uh, I think it'd be a great partnership with the, uh, with the library. We look forward to, uh, figuring out programs that we can jointly host there.
Right.
And, uh, partner with the library to get as many people in there and give it as much use as we can.
Right. All right, thank you for that, Don. That concludes item number seven. Moving on to item number eight, which is other reports. We're gonna start with our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, uh, several items, I'll go quickly, but, uh, I'm gonna answer any questions on these items. Um, I proposed to our city manager a, an agreement for marketing services. Uh, I reviewed an issue regarding Rafik Nekouzi's retirement. Um, I reviewed an issue the tax department is having with, uh, people recording conversations and whether those should be private or not. Two Supreme Court cases came out on public records requests that affect the police department. I advised Chief Arns of both of those decisions and the potential impact they would have on our operations there. Uh, I looked at the Forest Park Solid Waste Collection bid specifications. They are basically the same specifications we've used in the past with just two minor changes. And then I also did a code interpretation on an issue regarding group living facilities. And that would be the end of my report. And as I said, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, that, for that, Mr. Wykoff. Does anybody have any questions for our law director?
Was it, what was the conclusion with, and the tax department with, uh, people re-recording conversations? Was it concluded that that was something that could not be done?
It's a very complex issue. Of course, the public has the right of free speech to attend meetings, speak at meetings and what have you. This really doesn't fall under our sunshine laws in Ohio because it's not a public body as far as being in a meeting.
Yeah.
The problem I pointed out to the tax department is they have people standing at, like, um, plastic enclosed booths side by side. Someone could be recording their conversation with a tax person and pick up the conversation of the person next to them, which would be a violation of that person's privacy. So, um, with that caution in mind, uh, if the, if the tax department feels that there could be an invasion of the neighboring person's privacy, then there should be posted signs to that effect that there will be no recording.
Thank you so much for that.
All right, thank you for that, John. All right, moving on to our clerk of council, Mr. Kiebailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-three and resolutions number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three through fifteen dash twenty twenty-three was posted as required. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. All right, gonna move on to new business and I need a motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only, ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-three. These ordinances were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, motion to suspend passes six zero. All right, will the clerk please read ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-three by title only?
Ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance amending appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Forest Park, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Is, uh, motion to adopt ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
That this is an active, uh, dynamic item that council will be, uh, engaged with, uh, during the coming months of this year, so appropriations changes to deal with the finances. So that, uh, motion that we adopt, ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-three.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-three passes six to zero. Moving on, uh, I need another motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three through fifteen dash twenty twenty-three by title only. These resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Is second. It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. All right, motion to suspend passes six zero. Uh, will the clerk please read resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three by title only?
Resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to place special assessments against various properties by the city of Forest Park Community Development.
Is there a motion, First Vice Mayor Holt?
I would like to, uh, make a motion to accept resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
This is something that's done every year that, you know, the, uh, we requested Hamilton County a lot of to place a special assessments on, uh, I guess, various properties by the city of Forest Park and, uh, urge adoption of that resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three.
Thank you for that. All right, is there, uh, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
All right, resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three passes six zero. Uh, moving on, will the clerk please read resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty-three by title only?
Resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to negotiate and execute insurance coverage with the Ohio Plan for Insurance that includes, but is not limited to, property casualty and liability.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Um, I move that we adopt resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, is there any further discussion? So basically, this is just the city, um, requesting new proposals for casualty insurance. Uh, and we're moving to an occurrence-based policy. And that's gonna include everything from our property, our building, um, electric data, contracts, equipment. Um, and once we move to an occurrence-based policy, if I'm understanding correctly, um, this will protect, give the city further protection, but this is at a reduced cost.
Uh, it's the, uh, we are an occurrence-based policy and we're gonna, we were going to continue with that as well.
Okay.
So we, um, we did do an RFP for the, um, um, to bid it out or to get proposals. And, uh, the lowest proposal we received, in fact, the, the only one we received back, there's only about two groups that can provide this type of coverage. They're normally larger groups of cities that get together and, um, have municipal groups. Um, we're, we've been a member of this group for quite a while and the coverage is, um, went up just a little bit. The share can't remember the exact amount, I'm gonna say like seven thousand dollars, but it also, the coverage also went up drastically because we added, we added a, you know, a million-dollar fire truck and, uh, you know, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar building and some other things. So our coverages were drastically increased and our rate was only, I think, about seven thousand. And the rate increase was essentially because of the increased values and the increased items that we, um, that we added to the policy.
All right, so we're covering more items.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, with that, I would urge adoptions. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
All right, resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty-three passes six to zero. Uh, will the clerk please read resolution, uh, number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three by title only?
Resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for the We Thrive Mini Grant in the event that the city receives the grant from the Hamilton County Public Health and authorizing the city manager to sign any agreements necessary to obtain and release funds.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I move that we should adopt resolution number, uh, fifteen dash twenty twenty-three.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Other than this, uh, fifteen thousand dollar, uh, grant will, uh, provide additional aid to the city to advance, uh, some of the, uh, the park, uh, facilities. So, uh, with that, uh, with move that we adopt for the resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. I just want to note here for residents that this is a grant that we apply for. Um, it's just another example of the city trying to save, uh, taxpayer dollars. Plain and simple, we are looking at other additional resources to supplement the general fund. Um, I know people talk about taxes a lot, but we are working very, very hard, very diligently. Um, and thank you for that, City Manager, um, to make sure that we are applying for every free money that's out there. Any additional resource we are attempting to get so we can provide you, uh, quality services, more amenities, um, without, you know, breaking the bank, so to speak.
I'll, I'll take response, I'll take, uh, all the credit because I like to take credit. But actually, I, it's really the We Thrive group that we have here in City Forest Park. They're active and they really, really go out after these monies in particular. Uh, Dr. Moore here writes most of their grants, not all of them. And, uh, she does a great job finding money.
And we thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. And with that, uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three passes six to zero. Moving on. So the clerk please read resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-three, uh, in full.
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-three. Accepting the recommendations of the RFQ Review Committee and authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding and to negotiate a preliminary development agreement with the preferred developer for the Northland Tower redevelopment project. Whereas November third, twenty twenty-two, the city issued the Northland Tower Project Development Request for Qualifications, RFQ and Preliminary Development Proposals. And whereas on January ninth, twenty twenty-three, the solicitation for proposals process, for proposals process closed. And whereas the city received one development proposal from the L of R Design Group in partnership with Sanders Development Group Developer. And whereas the city internal RFQ review team analyzed the proposals and determined that the proposal met or exceeded all the requirements as contained in the RFQ. And whereas the RFQ Review Committee recommends the ci- to city council to accept L of R Design Group in partnership with Sanders Development Group as the preferred developer for the Northland Tower Redevelopment Project. And whereas at the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three work session, city council rece-received and reviewed the developer's RFQ response. And whereas as the, at the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three work session, the developer presented the RFQ response and a detailed presentation of their preliminary development proposals. And now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Forest Park. Section one, the city council hereby concurs with the city's internal RFQ review team and names the L of R Design Group in partnership with Sanders Development Group as the preferred developer of the Northland Tower Redevelopment Project. Section two, city council authorizes the city manager to negotiate, prepare and execute a memorandum of understanding with the L of R Design Group in partnership with the Sand, with the Sanders Development Group, naming them as the preferred developer and granting preliminary site control under such terms and conditions as deemed necessary by the city, city manager to benefit the city and the development. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect after its passage.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. And with that, I would urge adoption of resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, I know that was actually a lot that everybody just heard, but this is very, very exciting news for the city of Forest Park. So, um, if I can just elaborate, I'll try to be brief, uh, because I'm really excited. So the city of Forest Park, for over, a little over a year now, right? Uh, we have been working very diligently to bring more amenities, more businesses, more housing, um, to the city. And, uh, did we acquire in twenty twenty-one or twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-one, I believe.
So in twenty twenty-one, the city of Forest Park actually purchased, um, Canter Park, uh, the bulk of it. And that includes Northland Tower. So the park that is immediately behind, um, the post office is right off of Fresno. Uh, we acquired that in order to shop it around to different developers. Um, this Um, this resolution is actually accepting, we put out a, a request for qualifications to see if a real estate developer would come to, uh, rebuild the park in its entirety. Um, and that includes a complete update to the park and the facilities, the green space, but also adding, uh, several amenities, including retail, uh, businesses and also, uh, some market rate housing, state of the art. Um, and that actually, a part of this development, excuse me, would include, um, Northland Tower, so the six-story office space, uh, that is in the middle of the park, uh, we purchased that as well. Um, and we were going to turn that into market rate apartments also, so, um, by my estimations, this is anywhere between, uh, conservatively, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty million dollar redevelopment of this entire area, it'll bring anywhere between three hundred and fifty to four hundred units of market rate housing. It'll bring new businesses, it'll bring, uh, more office retail, uh, more office space. Um, and LVR is actually one of the premier, uh, developers in our region along with Sanders Development Group. Um, LVR was responsible for doing, uh, the work over in Blue Ash and Summit Park. Um, so this council, uh, city staff, uh, have worked very hard to bring new resources to the city of Forest Park, um, so I'm urging adoption of this. Uh, I'm incredibly excited about the prospect of more housing coming to Forest Park. I'm incredibly be excited about a new park, um, and just bringing a, a new resource, um, along with the anchor institution of, uh, a state of the art library. That entire area is gonna look different over there, um, and it's just, uh, it's a really, it's a really, really large scale development, and this is a testament to the work that we're doing for residents, uh, the fact that we do hear you about the businesses that you want to come, uh, the new housing that you want to, to come, but we're building, um, and we, we're showing that we're not only, uh, trying to play catch up, we out-compete other neighboring communities with the developments that we come, and we are sparing no expense on this one though. But I am really proud to, uh, announce, uh, here tonight. Um, and with that, uh, I'll conclude my remarks and, and let the rest of council say any other, any other words to this development.
I'm just totally excited because it is a big thing for Forest Park. We're moving into the next century in Forest Park.
Absolutely.
I'm very proud to, uh, sit in this chair as a councilwoman and extremely excited about being a resident in Forest Park at this time. Um, and any other time before, but this time there's just a zeal that I have now, knowing that, um, I have been a part of something so grand and so great for the city that I live in, and I want to thank the residents for trusting us to try to develop and bring forth and usher in such a great opportunity for our city. Um, so I just want to say that and, and thank the staff as well, the city manager, the clerk of council and parks and, like, just everybody. Just thank you who had a hand in this particular project, this, it's gonna be a great thing for our city.
Absolutely.
So, um, to our residents, thank you again, um, for entrusting us with the vision of the city of Forest Park, and, um, we are, um, a diamond on the hill. And so we need to market ourselves that way, um, and so we have great residents in our community. And we have hardworking residents who deserve, um, the amenities that, um, they work hard for, and so we're just very excited for new development, improving the quality of life for our residents. We have a new committee that is looking at the quality of life and how to enhance. Um, we, we have great programs, great residents, great parks, we have some of the best parks.
Yes, we do.
Um, and that's why communities come and use our facilities. We have tennis courts who are, are amazing tennis courts, um, basketball courts. So we just want to add more, um, resources for our residents, and so we hear you, and so we're excited.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none.
One of the things, getting into that, just a little on, uh, aside, that, um, we are, this project will, is part of that development team, is, uh, making construction, is a locally owned, one of the best construction companies in, in the world, literally, but literally, they're, they're headquartered right here in Forest Park, and they are, um, at every meeting we go to, uh, so they're really excited about participating in this as well. And we're excited about, uh, being able to use one of our local, uh, local assets to, uh, to, to, uh, as a part of this, uh, development team, so just want to let everyone know that, uh, that, that's just a little extra that, uh, we think is important, and we try and use local contractors and local, uh, businesses as much as we can.
Yeah, and, and Megha has been here for a while, and if anyone's familiar with them, they actually did a lot of the concrete for the Freedom Center, which is downtown on the bank, so we literally have the dream team, uh, working on this. Uh, and with that, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Adams?
Absolutely, yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-three passes six to zero. Um, uh, it's, I need a motion, um, for an appointment, Councilmember Harrison.
Uh, thank you, sir, I make a motion to appoint Diana Herbie from the Forest, Forest Park to the Community Programming Board Regional Council of Governments and the CPP Holdings Incorporated for the, uh, board for the terms expiring on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Uh, none at this time, we're just thankful that, uh, this Herbie stepped up once again just to, um, um, just, you know, take ownership of this community, um, and just really just continue to contribute in such a way.
All right, so there's no further discussion, uh, this can be a voice vote correct. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Diana, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, and I would like to make a motion to direct, uh, the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the city of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a new liquor license, a request for, uh,
They do request.
Oh, we do, actually, yes, so that the city of Forest Park does request. I repeat, does request a hearing regarding a new liquor license request for, uh, Mangla Bear Bazaar LLC doing business as, uh, Mangla Bear Bazaar at two two five eight Waycross Road, Forest Park, Ohio. Second. All right, it's been moved improperly seconded, um, actually, we need a little bit more detail on this going forward, but all those in favor, uh, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Can I just ask a question? Is this a new business, I've never heard of this before, is this a new business that's trying to open and, and, uh, get a liquor license?
I'm not sure how long they've been there, but they're down in the, uh, this, the, the strip center next to Ollie's.
Yeah, that area.
Yeah, and they, they've been there, I've noticed them, I'm just not sure how long they've been there, but they're a, um, yeah, they're trying to get a liquor license.
Yeah, what kind of liquor license they, are they trying to get?
A carryout license.
Carryout.
So is it like a small store or?
Is it next to the liquor store?
It, uh, would be the liquor store, and that would be the beer, it's right next to, it's, it's a small carryout.
Yeah, like steps from the liquor store, it's already over here.
Okay. All right, and that motion passes, so then, uh, I, I need a, is there a motion, um, to receive the general fund summary, uh, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion to receive the general fund summary report, as continued in the, uh, department, contained in the department reports.
Second. It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any other further discussion?
No further discussion.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, so that concludes all of our new business, so is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? All right, this council meeting is adjourned.